I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, und grouh, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And I'd like to start this meeting by thanking the Doylestown Township Police Department and the emergency responders for their excellent work on Sunday. I think I join thousands of people in the Central Bucks region across the country who have just communicated how well it all turned out. You contained the danger, you protected the residents, and you waited it out, and you used good judgment, and there was no loss of life. And I know the Clifton Township Police Department is very grateful for that. And I think the lieutenant said most succinctly that he's grateful for the restraint the responding officers used during the long standoff. As good as he is, that would be the offender. As a marksman, as physically fit, as a combat veteran, the SWAT team and all of the officers are as good as he is, and they were kind enough to show patience and professionalism, and they saved the life of this man. And I think I can speak for all the residents. No one wanted to see a death in Doylestown Township. And I want to thank all the residents who were displaced. It was very difficult for them. They were so patient and understanding themselves. I want to thank Patch, Sarah Larson, who kept us up till the minute. Everything, the information that she could get, she put online. And I want to thank the Penn Tap Room, who came through with food. Highland Farm, who donated their, who opened up their lodging, the Bed and Breakfast in Doylestown Township. My daughter Alexandra, who packed up all of our leftovers for Father's Day and had them sent over so that people could eat. There were 30 people here at 10 o'clock, more than 30, I guess, throughout the evening, who had, who were in this building and had no place to go because they were not allowed back in. I think everyone managed themselves very well, and I can't thank our police department and the other responders for their extremely well-handled day. And I think you all deserve, I don't know. I wish I could say more to express how I personally feel, but I think I'm speaking on behalf of everybody when I say this. And well done, and thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate the kind words. Obviously, the 19 men and women of the Doylestown Township Police Department didn't do it ourselves. There was multiple people out there. I can't even count the number of emergency responders that responded from Bucks County, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania State Police assisted. We've had, the North Penn Goodwill was out here to provide us food and drink to keep our guys hydrated. And once again, one of our township businesses, Campbell Insurance, came through and opened up their building to us for almost 12 hours without hesitation. Mr. Campbell's done a lot of donations for us in the past, and once again, I thank him, and I thank the support that the board's given me in my short tenure here. It's a way to get going, I guess.
Yeah.
It's welcome by fire. You know, we have a lot of things, we're going to be doing a lot of critiquing over the coming days and weeks. Obviously, things turned out to the best, but there's a lot of things that we can look at and probably improve upon ourselves, and we will do that, you know, the case-by-case basis with the tactical team, the negotiators, and the responding units.
And the administration.
Yes.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate the chief, who will be getting married this Saturday. So what a way to start a new, a new job and a new relationship.
Talk about stress.
Thank you again, chief.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank everybody for us.
I will.
You know, replay this meeting so they know truly how much we appreciate it.
I will.
We have a presentation tonight. Oh, by the way, I also want to, as a housekeeping measure, Steffi Mason, our manager, who was here Saturday night along with me, had a death in the family, so she's in Michigan, and Sandra Zadel, our assistant manager, is sitting in for her. So now, presentation from Shelbourne. Is that you guys? Excellent.
That would be us, again.
Can I sit in for the rest of the meeting? You're welcome.
I'm going to hang around for a little while.
Feel free. Thank you.
My name's Joe Zadlo. I'm here with Tom Hanna and Dave Ennis, and we are the same team that was here as Sunrise Assisted Living a few years back. And I recognize that there's a lot of you who are still here from a few years back. It's not only the same team, it's the same site, it's the same project with minor variations. And we have the same cooperative attitude. We have already met with the residents, and we're excited and anxious to try to bring this through to the finish line this time. There are improvements of a sort. One of the concerns when we were here previously was the amount of land that was remaining in the hands of the seller. There is now less land in the hands of the seller. We are purchasing more land, and it will only be the AAAA site itself which we are not buying.
Excuse me, Mr. Zadlo, who is going to be the operator? It's not Sunrise, but...
No, not Sunrise.
No, there's going to be two different operators.
Okay, oh, not identified yet.
No.
Okay, but you are going through with the original facility plan?
Yes.
With modification?
We are, and I will, I, and this is kind of funny. When I started with Sunrise Assisted Living was a new product, and we had to explain in great detail what assisted living was.
I don't know, I object to the word "product." No offense, but older folks who have, need assisted living, they're really, not really a product.
Well, I wasn't referring to them as the product, but I'll never use that word again.
Thank you.
A new land use. And by now, when we go into townships and communities, we find that pretty nearly every third person has a relative or a friend who's in assisted living. So if there are any questions about assisted living, Dave Ennis or I will be glad to answer them. But now, I'll let Tom Hanna take you through the plan, which is on the easel.
Yes, I'll be brief, but the site, as Joe said, is the same site they were at before. It's along 611, in between the car dealership and the Doylestown Shopping Center there, where the Sears Hardware, Redner Shop, the supermarket is. This lot is the, the lot configuration that is there is the existing lot, so we're not subdividing, we're not changing the lot line at all. The same acreage that remains on the old AAAA site is that parcel itself. And so Shelbourne is buying the remaining portion of that. It's its own parcel at this point, so there's no subdivision at all. Along with that, we're maintaining the existing driveway access that's currently there, and that will be shared with the adjacent office building. I guess that's vacant at this point, but a use would someday come in there, probably in the near future, so that shared access will remain. The building is primarily in the same location, with parking around the perimeter and the service area around the back that faces the car dealership to the south. We plan on still using the same, the existing detention base in there with some modifications, most likely, similar to the plan we had before. We'll have to augment that with additional stormwater, again, as we did before, but that will be in planning in the near future with our preliminary plan submission. This is a multi-story building. We currently have, are showing 58 parking spaces. I think we only, I mean, 54, but that's essentially, essentially the plan. There's some outdoor facilities for the residents here. There's patio area as well as a, I'm not even sure what you would call that.
A walking trail.
A walking trail around the back. And that's, that's basically the plan at this point. So we will proceed with our preliminary plan design and submission in the near future.
Tom, as I remember, you got through certain approvals with your other application, did you not?
Yeah.
Did you get preliminary plan approval?
I'm not sure if we actually had preliminary plan. I know we got through at least one review.
But you got through the zoning?
Zoning.
Yes, yes.
But I think that's as far as they got, actually.
I don't understand, then about six years ago.
We didn't see anything, we didn't see anything else.
Zoning is as far as we got. We did, might mention that in meeting with neighbors, there was a strong concern expressed by them about the location of the dumpster facilities, and we have moved them behind the building so that the building is between them and the dumpster. They've asked that if, in meeting our landscape requirement, we can plant as much material as possible along the rear boundary line of their homes, and they're also so concerned that there not be any development in this rear portion of the tract, and we have no plans and probably no ability under the coverage regulations to do any development in that area.
Opportunity for some open space, perhaps?
Perhaps.
Okay, thank you. Rick, you were pretty intimately involved in the planning of, as a member of the Planning Commission. I remember that when this came before us, it was, it was favorably looked upon by the board, and we allowed the zoning change, and I believe the neighbors were all, the neighbors then, were all in support of this project. And we also thought it was a good use and probably a necessary service for this community as we're all getting older, and there's, you know, there are only so many places for us of our age. Anyway, so, Rick, you have...
In fact, when they came into Planning Commission last month, they have even made more improvements on top of what we saw a few years ago. And it was one of the nice parts of the meeting to see eight to 10 residents out there and find out they were all in support of this project. So that was a good, good work on your part to get them involved early in the process.
Thank you. Yeah, well, we know them for a long time.
Does anyone have, anybody, other members have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Zadlo, Mr. Hanna. I know you're going to, you know how to progress from here on, so I'm sure the staff is going to be available.
We do, and we'll work closely with everyone.
Thank you.
Do our best to get it done as quickly as possible.
Think open space, we like open space.
We're very ready to talk about open space.
Good evening. All right, any visitor or public comment? Please take the microphone, sir.
Approximately one month ago, there was a meeting between Doylestown Township, De Burrow...
State your name and address.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Tom.
Morris Osensky, 159 Hart Avenue. Approximately a month ago, there was a meeting among Doylestown Township, De Burrow, Luke Pico, and Septa. At that meeting, a number of concerns were brought up, some of which I believe are being taken care of. I don't know the progress, but something's happening. One of the things that is not happening is I brought up the fact that when Pico extended that road, they brought in dozens and dozens of big trucks full with stone, a couple of tons for each truck, and they completely changed the whole slope of that road. They put gullies in the road, they went off the road and put places that are now water-retention basins. After a rain right now, we see something like a 30-foot by 15-foot pond. I believe we sent you pictures of it. If you don't have them, I have copies, Xerox copies of them. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm worried that those ponds are, every time we have a rain, we're going to have a pond, and that's a nice mosquito trap. And we have enough bugs without any more mosquitoes. I'd like to know if anybody's doing anything, who can I talk to? Every time I leave a name, my name somewhere, nobody ever calls me back.
Mr. Osensky, I'm surprised to hear that because I've been, we've been communicating directly with Deborah Knouse, Knouse, Graus, who emails us regularly and has sent me pictures. And I have been out to the site with Mr. John and the manager, and representatives from the borough, and Pico, and Septa, and we've looked at the site. And since then, I understand that Mr. John and his crew have been out to the site numerous times, trying to determine how best to remediate the situation, and they are working on it. And I'm surprised that you haven't been able to find someone to tell you that because it's been ongoing. Mr. John, you care to add to that?
That's exactly where we are with the issue.
I'm just interested in that one problem about the water, which, I've lived in that house for 17 years, and the water always used to go down a road, never had a problem. Now I've got this lake behind my house. It's on Pico property, but it's behind my house, and it's a breeding ground. Now, somebody is working on that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, is there going to be any meeting or anything to tell us what's happening?
Can you leave your contact information with us in the back, and then we will make sure you get notice of what's going on?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitor or public comment, sir?
My name is Jim Dibble, and I live at 218 Windsor Way. I was glad to hear that from 10 o'clock on that things were, people were happy and things were taken care of, but I came here to talk about 2:00 to 10:00. But before I do, I owe Mrs. Lyons an apology, and I wanted to make it as a public forum as I harassed her when she showed up at 9:00. I apologize for my tone. I do not apologize for my level of frustration.
I understood your level of frustration.
I'm not sure that you could if you hadn't have been here. Just want, I was glad to hear, chief, that there's going to be a critique, because there certainly needs to be a critique of what happened and how it happened and what didn't happen. Yeah, I'm the one. I'm the one.
I don't, I didn't recognize you without your hat.
Yeah, yeah. You know, what I was fearful of is the all's well that ends well, and that everything gets forgotten about that didn't go well. And not everything went well. Police, A+, perfect, it was wonderful. If you were here for the whole thing, like I was, you would truly appreciate what happened and how it happened. But there were some real problems, and problems for the residents, and that's what I wanted to point out, a few of them. The first thing I want to start out with was the communication, and the conflicting communication. My wife and I were separated. I showed back up, she was at the house, and I pulled into the neighborhood about 2:15, couldn't get in. I made my way down to the Windsor Way, and there was a policeman there with an M16 informing me of that there'd been a shooting and that there was a shooter in the neighborhood. Called my wife, let her know what was going on, and then the Doylestown Township Police, we got our recording, phone recording, that said, you know, there's a problem, I'm bittersweet, and you all know it. Go inside, lock your doors, pull the blinds, go to the basement, that's the safest thing to do. I totally agree with that. But then, there were police in the neighborhood and approaching shotgun-wielding police up your driveway, knocking on the doors, telling you, you have to leave now. Total conflict. I called my wife and said, the policeman with the M16 told me that there was a shooting, and the shooter was in the neighborhood. How is, how do we know that this guy isn't dressed up like a policeman, and now he's looking for some refuge or tried to take some hostage? People are terrified, people are scared, people don't know what's going on, and then we get this conflict of information. It created confusion. My wife wasn't sure what to do. She stayed where she was for a while. When one of the neighbors came out, at the insistence of the policeman, she came out with him, and then she eventually finally got out, and about halfway through the episode, we finally got together and all that stuff. There was a press, there were two press conferences. I actually attended both of them. I don't, I'm looking around, I don't see anybody here that was at any of those press conferences, except me. We had two problems. One problem, the police were taken care of remarkably. We had a second problem. We had residents who were told to leave their house, and we had other residents that weren't allowed to return to their house. Two problems. The chief, Meehan, I think was his name, Meehan? He was...
Chief Metten.
Metten, I'm sorry. He did his best to try to deal with that. I was the only person there that asked any questions of him, of the residents. At that time, we couldn't leave either direction. We were stuck in the park. I asked the chief, I says, if I leave, can I come back? Well, I don't know, we're going to try to close everything down, I don't know if you can come back, but if you tell the guy at the end of Turk Road that the chief said that you could come back, he'll let you come back. Well, you know how well that works. You know, I go down to the end of the road, and I said, well, the chief said I could come back. He says, not if the chief doesn't tell me. Okay, so, so there, you know, we had a madman with a gun, we had residents who were displaced and didn't know what to do. Where was, who was there? You know, most press conferences that you see, there's the police chief, and then there's the government person, and they're dealing with both issues. That didn't happen.
Can I speak to that?
Certainly.
Because you say, I don't understand your frustration. Let me explain to you my frustration that day. As I was home preparing for my father-in-law, my husband's Father's Day dinner, I learned from a friend in Buckingham that there was activity over here, and I went on the police scanner website, and that's how I found out about these things. Now, and I also, and I also, and I also found, I also listened carefully, read carefully what the one reporter at the time who was able to get in here, Sarah Larson from Patch, had annotated throughout the day. I did communicate with the chief, who did communicate with me, who indicated that everybody was safe, and then silence went. And I, as frustrated as you are, I was frustrated, I couldn't communicate with my board because I had nothing to communicate, and what I wanted to do was be here to do exactly what you needed to have done, have a voice for the residents. But it wasn't, either it wasn't safe, or it wasn't possible. So we did our best with the situation. Now, as the chief indicated to you, there are some things that need to be tweaked. That may be one of them. But at the time, radio silence is radio silence, and I needed a police escort. By the time I could get here, I needed a police escort to get here. And as you know, by the time I got here, the restaurants were closed and people were hungry, people needed a medication, there were dogs who were left unattended, cats who had just had surgery. All that, all that was dealt with as soon as I got here and over the next hour. So we did the best we could under the circumstances, and those circumstances were dictated minute by minute by the police action. And like I said, I was, I felt your frustration when I got here because I saw all those, all you people who needed information, who couldn't get the information, because the information under the circumstances could not be made available to us. And I, and I won't chastise the police, however, I will, I will, you know, do whatever I can to make sure that our board gets involved as quickly as possible. But I have to be respectful. We all are respectful of the circumstances under which this, the whole events took place on Sunday. And I'm not going to second-guess that on Tuesday night quarterbacking, not going to do that. But as you say, Mr. Dibble, and I responded to your email today, we are going to look at it.
Yes.
This is part of the protocol. The police are going to do their debriefing, they're going to do our, do debriefing with us, and we're going to make sure that if ever this happens again, as I said to you, that it's going to be the best situation under the circumstances, and I pray, we all pray, that something like this never happens again. So I hope that explains to you where this board is coming from. And, chief, I don't know if you need...
I would just like to make one comment regarding the conflicting statements as far as officers telling people to leave versus not telling people to leave. Initial, and I don't know what your timeframe is, and at this point, I'm just going to tell you that initially, initial responding officers stood by with standard protocol, get as many people out of the area as possible, as quickly as possible. Once the situation became contained, and there's a known barricades armed subject, there was conscious decisions being made whether or not to try evacuations or leave them in place. The decision was made to leave people in place so that we didn't put any additional emergency personnel in danger of being shot upon, considering the number of rounds that were already exposed to us. That's the reason why people were in. We, the police department, personally made phone contact with every single person we could possibly reach through telephones, either cell phone, home phones, relatives, of everybody within, on Windsor Drive, Bittersweet Drive, as many as we could reach, and we documented which ones we actually had contact with, and explained to them exactly where to go. And you stated where to go, the basement, lowest level possible. We made arrangements to have this place being a place for everyone to go, to come together, to be a group. And that's, beyond that, I apologize if you didn't get communications from us because we represent the board of supervisors. Okay? That should fall back on me, and I'm going to be honest with you. When you have 250 personnel running around out there, I apologize, but the people that were in the danger zone, were safe.
I accept that completely. I don't accept that at all. I managed to get my wife from 218 Windsor Way to the park three hours before you managed to get here. So I know it's possible.
Can I ask how you got her there?
Well, she was escorted out by the police, and then I drove out, went around, picked her up, and drove back in. That's a fact.
Okay.
That was about 5:00.
Mr. Dibble, at 3:45, I texted the chief, I asked him, can I, should I come over?
I believe you.
He may, he said no, and I respect that. Everybody was safe, the situation was contained, they were in radio silence. I stayed put. I wasn't going to have a police escort at that time until the chief said I needed to be here. I got here when the chief, when the, when the information required me to be here.
I understand.
Okay.
At the second press conference, which I attended, after the chief went through all of his information, I asked him if there had been any plans or any arrangements made for those residents which they had asked to leave their house. At this point, it's getting later, I forget exactly what time this was, 6:00 or 7:00 or something like that. And he said he would respond to me, but he wouldn't do it in front of the cameras. And I understood that because he didn't have anything good to tell me. And he said if you'd meet me right over here, and actually, I think he, Channel 3 caught us talking to him over here at, he drove around to get away from the cameras, and we asked him again, and there was a group of us, was there any plans, what's going on, what are we supposed to do, where are we supposed to go, is there any food? There hasn't been any here, you know, he opened up the room, so we had a place to sit down, we had a water fountain here, we had some bathroom. Is there anything, is there anything being done? And he said, you know, I'll see what I can do for you. Now, I respect that because we weren't his first priority, clearly, nor did we want to be his first priority. We just wanted something, some help, some information, something. So we needed somebody here that the residents were their first priority. So, we needed somebody here that the residents were their first priority. We needed, those of us that had been here since about 2:15, we were afraid to leave because we had husbands or wives, childrens or pets on the other side of Wells Road. We didn't wanna leave, we didn't know if we could make it back, we, if things went from bad to worse, we wanted to be here. There was no food, no communication, no clear messages. I believe that, as there was this great command center that you could see down the street at Camelage, there needed to be a command center for the residents. Somebody needed to be collecting information, collecting intelligence, you know. This could never happen in our neighborhood, but it did. It could've gone from bad to worse. We should've tried to start accounting for every person that lives in the neighborhood in case it did go from bad to worse. There was no all-clear message sent as there was that there's a shooter in the neighborhood. If you're hunkered down in the basement, I'm not sure how you know when it's time to come up out of the basement. And I certainly didn't get called as I had asked under difficult circumstances, but nobody bothered to call me after I left.
You left before, you know, we started the list.
Oh, no, actually--
Before I got here, but--
Actually, the police officer that I talked to--
Because anyone here--
Let me just finish, please. The police officer who went outside with me. I said, I've been asking--
Lieutenant O'Connor.
Lieutenant O'Connor. I said, "Lieutenant O'Connor, I've been trying, I've been asking for five hours to get, have somebody write my name and phone number down so I can leave. I don't wanna get in the way, I don't wanna be a problem, I don't wanna bother anybody, I just wanna leave. But I won't leave unless I know that I'm gonna be contacted when this, when I can come back." He said, "I can't do that." And I go, "Well, I don't understand. You can't do that. Yeah, we do it through reverse 911 and..." I said, "Well, what if nobody's there to get a reverse 911? Then what do you do? And what if your cellphone's dead?" My wife's cellphone ran out, ran out of power. Oh, that was another thing I wanted to mention, we needed cellphone chargers, we needed things like that, that people need, that have been displaced. People were trying to borrow each other's cellphone chargers and things, we're trying to find. We were trying to round up for ourselves what should've been provided. And, but anyway, back to the officer, I said, I said, "Look, there's 25, 30 households in the room. Somebody can't get a piece of paper and write their name and phone number down? That's asking too much."
Could you have done that, sir?
Huh? Could I have?
Stepped up and volunteered to do that?
Anybody could have.
And I, when as in-depth and serious as you are about the issue, it was not surgery. And somebody like yourself, knowing the problem, that could've helped, could've stepped up and taken that list.
Right.
But only initiative to say, "Hey, there's a need here. It's something we didn't plan for and obviously something needs to be done."
I could have. Were you here all day?
I was not here.
Okay, good.
But let me, when I got here, that list was created and--
Yes, it was.
Every single person on that list was called when the all-clear came through. Every single person.
It was created and I unfortunately harassed you to create it. And I apologize for that. I shouldn't have done that. When you came in, you sat down right over there and you said, "Well, I'm here now, it's 9 o'clock, the police, I'm here to tell you that there's nothing we can do, the police are, everything's still having at bay and there's, we can't do anything." And I said--
Well, I'm taking offense at your comments and your characterization of what happened that night and my comments, so if you're almost finished, I would appreciate--
I am almost finished. I am almost finished.
Thank you.
Okay. He, the officer, came in, got a pad of paper so I could write my name and phone number on, and he brought the pad of paper back in. And I guess I was the only one that wasn't called because I will finish with your characterization of when I asked, when you went to get the pad of paper and I asked you if, will you call me? That's what I got. You remember that? You remember me?
I remember the residents in the room throwing you out of the building. That's what I remember.
Well--
Because you were so obnoxious. Mr. Dibble, you were extremely obnoxious and Lieutenant O'Connor had to go out and subdue you practically.
No, he didn't.
Sir, are you finished? Please sit down.
I am, I am finished.
Sure, the residents of Doylestown Township are gonna be entirely entertained by your comments tonight, as they--
Well, you know, it's unfortunate that you or any of your group weren't here from 2 to 9 o'clock to be able to help us and we could've avoided this whole thing, but unfortunately, the facts are that you weren't. I appreciate you letting me know that you were having a meeting tonight so that I could come and address the group. I hope that you'll take my serious, my comments seriously.
We've noted your comments.
I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Sir?
My name is Stephen Bison, number 10 Salmon Road. I'd just like to trust the chief. We've had a speed thing on Salmon Road for a long time and they were doing a great job. Now, all of a sudden, it's back like another speedway. And it's because the people try, you know, avoid the light at Furlong Anderson 611. And then the daycare center up at the end of the road, you've got to sign up by no left turn. It's like it doesn't exist for those people. They just come out, you'll be driving down, they come right out and go right down Salmon Road. Don't stop at that stop sign, it's like it's a, it doesn't exist. They need a signs like Quaker Town that tells you to stop at a stop sign. I mean, our guys do a wonderful job and the ones that weren't enforcing it, but now they're back, and the landscapers, the same way, up and down, they don't even slow down.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah, sure.
The Salmon Road and Turk Road have been a major part of the Traffic Advisory Committee for probably the better part of two years.
A headache.
We had reduced the speed limit on Salmon Road from 35 miles to 25 miles. We similarly did that to Turk Road from 35 to 25. We constructed heavy enforcement and tried to get the drivers to be aware of the reduced speed limit. We got the speed limits down to an acceptable level.
Yeah, you were doing great.
As part, in secondary to that, the Traffic Advisory Committee was thinking about what happens when the police leave, which is what you stated there. My concern, and the Traffic Advisory Committee's concern was that once we start reallocating our enforcement efforts to one of the many other roads in our townships, that we could be back to the similar problem. So, we did a test study, sir. We vacated our enforcement to see if the learned behaviors of the drivers was gonna be effective enough. If what you're telling me is accurate, the speeds are back to where they're at, then we have to start thinking about other means of traffic calming. We have not put our study speed boards back out there. I think we're planning to get them back out there in the beginning of July to get the true statistics. So, to answer your question at this point, if you can give us another couple of weeks to get those boards back out there to see if your concerns are legitimate or whether they're perceived, we would appreciate the little bit of leeway.
Well, you guys do a great job and they were doing a great job. And it's just like you say, the people go right back, soon as they don't see an officer, they're right back to the same--
That is absolutely one of the concerns of the Traffic Advisory Committee and we've been studying it for a while. And Turk Road and Salmon Road are both kind of--
I mean, it's like our parks. To me, it should be 15 mile an hour by the parks. I drove a truck all over. And most parks where anybody are, is a 15 mile speed limit past that park. Those poor women walking down the road, we don't have any children, walking up and down with it, they get to the park and ride their bicycle. They just, I mean to say, they don't care to people. I saw, last night, I seen one, a fellow's trying to ride the bike with his little girl, they won't even wait for him. And the mailman, shame on the poor mailman. But outside of that, you did a great job before. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, sir. Any other visitors or public comment? All right, announcements. This board will next meet on Tuesday, July 17th, here at 7 o'clock. We're gonna be closed on Wednesday, July 4th for Independence Day. Sounds of summer concert series, we've provided, thank you Karen Sweeney, Director of Parks and Recreation, a list of the summer concert series right here. Please take one on your way out. The first one is next Wednesday, 7:00 PM at Chapman Park in Doylestown Borough. It's also the time when Ways and Means Committee meets, so take a choice, Ways and Means or the Park Concert, 7:00 next Wednesday, June 27th. Philly Horn and Band is the 1st of July, 7:30 at Central Park. And Doylestown, yeah, the Doylestown Heat is at Chapman Park on the 12th of July. Everything is free, everything is free, so. Next, leaf and yard waste recycling is Saturday, July 21st. Doylestown Township residents can bring their waste, yard waste to Central Park, entrance off New Britton Road, 9:00 AM to noon. And check the website for updates for fall and for the summer and fall leaf and yard waste recycling program. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the June 5, 2012 meeting.
For approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, you know, members of the board, I did send a letter, it's probably in your information packet, to Commissioner Lockery for his attendance at our meeting and we followed up with those comments that we discussed in that letter, so. Any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondence from the Buckingham Township Comprehensive Plan. We were sent the site for their draft of that plan. I would suggest that, you know, we take a look at it, but we also ask planning commission and administrative staff to take a look at any of the issues or concerns in the draft of their comprehensive plan that might affect Doylestown Township so that we can, you know, pass on comment, okay?
Good idea.
Okay, Sandra? Thank you. Thank you. There, we have received a notice of resignation from Mr. Hopkins from the Environmental Advisory Council. Unfortunately, I think we have to accept his resignation with regret. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept him with regrets.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye. That means we have an opening for the EAC.
For the EAC.
Advertise.
And it's an alternate position, an alternate position. What I would suggest is if we, before we, well, we can advertise, but advertise with other advertisements available. But let's see if we have anybody who's already applied for the EAC who might wanna be on that, might wanna serve in that capacity, okay? Everyone okay with that?
Very good.
Solicitor.
Yes, Ms. Mason attached to your agenda something which appeared to not be relevant to Doylestown Township because it had to do with the proposal in North Hampton Township, but I think she was bringing to your attention, if you haven't already noticed in the paper and what we reported, the issues associated with this particular company expanding a cellphone and related services product into neighborhoods where, when they have underground utilities, they're building these new structures in the right of way. And as a general principle, if you are a cellphone company and not regulated by the PUC, you don't have an absolute right to use rights of way. However, if you have a certificate of public convenience from the Public Utility Commission and you accede to their jurisdiction, you have the right without limitation to be in public rights of way for purposes related to what your certificate of property and this relates to. Most cell phone, all cellphone companies don't accede to jurisdiction of the PUC because they have, they couldn't raise rates without getting PUC approval. This is a company which is building structures but not regulating it, so it's not regulated as far as cost, but it gives them the right to encroach. But knowing all of that, I have met with the Newtown, pardon me, the North Hampton Township Solicitor and have gotten an idea where they're headed with respect to this, they're gonna send me some draft ordinances. And also, potato, the Bucks County Association of Township Officials is also involved. So, what I'm trying to say in a long, about way of getting there is that we will monitor this and when there appears to be a consensus as to how to deal with this appropriately in the future, Doylestown Township will be involved in that process and we will report back as events transpire, so.
Thank you.
Unless somebody has any questions, that's all I have on that topic.
Stand, standing by.
Go ahead.
Do you wanna speak to this? That's good news for us.
In addition--
Although I think the intelligence are already ported on it, Christine Christofka--
We've had a piece of litigation about the billboard where the owner of the billboard wanted to do digital messages on the billboard, the township proposed it and Judge Baldi, after the hearings, before the zoning hearing board and in his own brief file, denied the appeal filed by the billboard company, so there will be no digital billboards on 611.
That's, one for the good guys.
For change.
Thank you. About a week ago, you were all served, or the members of the board were served with Bucks County Regional Police Study prepared by the DCED. As you know, for the last year, there's been talk of police regionalization in the Central Bucks area. We're now into discussions with five municipalities, Doylestown Borough and Township, Newtown Borough and Township, and Plumstead Township. We have been meeting regularly.
I think she's in Newtown.
Did I say Plumstead?
Plumstead.
Again? New Britton Township, New Britton Borough. Scratch Newtown, not Newtown. I don't, I did that before, I apologize. New Britton Borough, New Britton Township, Plumstead Township, Doylestown Borough and Doylestown Township. Our last meeting, this was presented live by the folks from DCED. And from there, we have, well, the chief is gonna take over now, but from there, we're going to have a presentation from our chief on the, our next meeting in July, July 17th, on this proposal and on police regionalization. And then we're gonna have, assuming we're gonna go forward after that meeting, then we will have a larger meeting of all five municipalities, public meeting on July 24th. Assuming, like I said, assuming that this board votes to go forward to that meeting, okay? Chief? Did I miss anything?
You kinda hit it off. I was gonna, I was prepared for that one.
Question? Will that die, can it be available properly?
Yeah, we can, yeah--
I think it's online.
June 8th, June 8th, the Police Regional Steering Committee received a written report from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, referred to as DCED. They also gave us a brief PowerPoint presentation, which I was able to obtain a copy of. If the board chooses, I would be prepared to present a copy of that PowerPoint presentation to the Board of Supervisors on your next meeting, which I believe is July 19th.
Oh, it's in, okay.
July 19th.
Sorry.
Well, 17th, I think, if that's--
Whatever that Tuesday is.
Yeah, it's the 17th.
July 17th. Make a presentation to you, basically take their PowerPoint presentation, present it to the Board of Supervisors. The conclusion of that, I would expect the board maybe make a decision whether or not you would like to move forward and meet with the communities at large, the five communities at large. I think they were talking about Lenape Middle School possibly as a site, to make that PowerPoint presentation to the five communities and have as many supervisors there and get, I guess, public comment, whatever that may be. That presentation on the 24th of July would be made by the members of the DCED themselves. And it's probably, it may or may not be the exact same presentation, I don't know. I think at the July, your July 17th meeting, I can show you some highlights, some areas of concern, some things to check on, you know, some numbers to verify and that type of stuff. At this point, I see absolutely no reason why there's, the township should not continue to look at it. It's, if there's enough, enough information in this report that makes it worth pursuing. So, I think that, you know, your July 17th meeting, I'd like to make that presentation to you.
And I think it's fair to say that all the municipalities' managers and elected officials represented on this committee feel the same way and each municipality is doing what we're doing. We're gonna, each is going to make a presentation to their, to the borough or council, board or council members, and each has the opportunity to vote, to go forward, to study more or to discuss more publicly, which is what we will be doing on the 17th. The other thing I wanted to throw in is that we received a communication, a letter from representatives from the Police Benevolent Association and they are interested in cooperating and discussing regionalization and have every intention to do that in a positive, positive way going forward, not--
That's correct.
Yes, exactly, so. All right, so stand by for the 17th, you'll be on the agenda, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the township engineer?
Nothing this evening.
Manager, that would be you.
Okay. Or Assistant Manager--
Or Assistant Manager. I have for you guys, Steph prepared, the new hire no smoking policy. There's a policy verification and affidavit, and I think that this requires some action through your approval.
This requires, this requires a vote of the board?
Approval and insertion in your personnel manual.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd just like to say, on the contrary of some of the things you read in the paper, some people who seem to have made comments to our policy, that they don't understand there's a considerable amount of savings for our insurance, for us to go to the no smoking policy, saves, use the taxpayers considerable amount of money. And a lot of people go off on a tangent, and just blow off about the fact that we don't allow our workers, our new hires, to smoke. And obviously, that does two things, saves us money as taxpayers, and saves anybody working here money from getting diseases from smoking. So I, you know, I'm just, I'm just bringing this out, that articles that I've read in the paper, letters to the editor, et cetera, et cetera, and I think it should be addressed that they don't state that we are saving money doing this, and, but we have stated that in past conversation, I know Barbara Lyons has stated that a couple times, so I believe Lee has something to say.
And certainly, yes.
You're not special.
We need to just give you a wireless.
There you go.
Lee Schwartz.
I understand, Lee Schwartz, obviously Doylestown Township. I guess the thing you need to consider is, okay, so you've selected, smoking is a habit that you're going to legislate against first, how soon is it till we say that obesity is now going to cost us too much on our health policy, so we'll start not hiring people because they're obese?
We're just going to deal with smoking. We're not going into any other areas that may otherwise be protected by the Constitution.
But you've kind of stepped down that way. I just want to bring it to your attention, thank you.
I was just curious, I know that...
Reidentify yourself.
Oh, yeah, Jim Dibble, 218 Windsor Way. I know it's becoming more and more popular within industry to charge a special premium for people who chose, choose to smoke or not smoke, and I was curious whether you had considered that as a possibility?
The, we get insurance through Delaware Valley Regional Insurance Trust, and they have not provided that option yet, and I think the savings for the township is over almost $40,000 a year, so we did explore that.
Okay, no, I just, it's becoming, you know, it's just right on the fringe, it may become an option sooner than later, but...
Thank you. All right. It's passed, right? Did we vote?
We have voted.
Oh, is there a motion? Is there a second?
There's a motion.
All in favor of the policy?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
The Chalfont Chemical Fire Engineering Company Number One would like to present Doylestown Township with a certificate of appreciation for your support of their new building and the construction of the firehouse, so that's thanks to them.
Very nice, thank you.
Nice.
Lastly, I'm very excited to report, I'm sorry Steph's not here, because I know that she's even more excited than I am, about the International City County Management Association Award that we have been presented with in conjunction with Buckingham Township and Plumstead Township, for a community health and safety award, and it's for our Cross Keys Water Project. So this is an international organization of city managers, it's a huge accolade, so we're excited for the board to receive this award. And it'll be presented at the annual ICMA Conference in Phoenix, Arizona.
Who's going?
Probably Steph, I think she's, this award is for, you know, managers and members of ICMA, so hopefully she'll get to go. It's up to you guys.
I've got to really attribute this award, if we could, to Dick John, who was the, is the, you did the work on this. It was your project, and you, with a soft, with a soft brush coerced Buckingham Township to join in, so we congratulate Buckingham and Plumstead also for this cooperative effort, but Dick, you were the, you were the architect, instigator, and you, and the closer, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all you have. Any comments from supervisors? We'll start with you.
Okay.
Sean Toohill.
Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. All right, I have a few comments. One, earlier this week, I guess it was a very busy week, I wanted to take the opportunity to commend the chief, the rest of the police force, even our fire department, although totally different situation, they had a fire over at Stonington Apartments, and by the time I was on the scene, I think they were busy escorting folks into get belongings, if nobody knows it was a large fire. I think all, everybody in the building was displaced, and fortunately, nobody injured. That's obviously the most important thing, and, but again, they really showed professionalism, and just that they had it together, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Good job. The second thing, Fund Development Committee, the subcommittee of the Ways and Means, has narrowed down their ideas to three or four recommendations, and they hope by the next meeting, the July meeting, to be able to present those.
The next meeting of the board, July?
Correct.
Okay.
Lastly, in case I was remiss in doing so, I wanted to thank Barbara and Stephanie, who's not here tonight, for the work you did, and for being here and representing us this weekend, so, thanks very much.
My pleasure.
That's it.
Tom?
Yes, it has been a tough week, as indicated about Stonington Farms, but one thing that Sean didn't indicate, he was there helping and working with this, and I got this from his children.
Oh.
Who told me this.
Well, if you heard, listen to them, I was putting the fire out, but, and carrying somebody out and off.
You're their hero, Sean.
Yeah, we had a couple tough situations this week, and I understand what, eight families were displaced out of that building because of somebody throwing a cigarette but into a pile of, I don't know, it was, I guess, mulch that they had out there, and that's what started the fire at that unit. And it's a shame that people aren't more considered about what they do with things that they throw out, but it does happen, and things beyond our control, but we had good people there to take care of that, and good people, as the chief and his people, to take care of the situation at Bittersweet, and I'm just so happy and proud that I'm living in Doylestown Township where people react and work together and get things accomplished, keep this a great place to live, so, my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right.
Well, to follow up with Tom, we're not the only ones proud to live in a township, we just received another letter, and you hear me every month reading these letters, thanking us, no, thanking Dick John, I'd just like to read a little bit of it. "We wanted to take the time to write and thank you, Dick John, and the township providing a privacy fence on the outskirts of our property. This fence has made a great difference for us in the safety of our three children with regard to the bike path that has been put in. We have greatly appreciated the township's consideration of our request, and we are very pleased with how everything was handled. Installation went very smoothly, and the workmanship is well done. Your crew did an excellent job. We are proud, we are very proud to live in a township where the director of operations listens to his residents and takes correct, takes considerate action." So, I don't want to make it Dick John night, but thank you...
Everyone smiles. It's Dean Logan night.
Is it Dean Logan? Well, both of you.
You're not in the township competition.
I didn't know that. Oh, yes you did, you showed up.
The other issue was, we had the Pebble Ridge Sewer Meeting on June 7th, which was well-attended. If you weren't able to attend, it's on our website, all the information is there. The video of the meeting is there, so you can hear not only the presentation, but also the comments from some of the residents. We have received some emails, so we're still in that process of gathering information, so please avail yourself of that. And last, Barbara, I have the same conflict and consternation about next, the 27th on Wednesday. I'm used to going to the Fab Four as the Ways and Means Committee. My wife wants to go to the Fab Four in the musical venue, so we're still negotiating that, but I hope to...
Go to the music, Brett.
Go to the music. And with that, I'll keep quiet.
Thank you. Following up on the Public Water Sewer Advisory Committee, our meeting on this Thursday, 5 o'clock, they're going to review the comments from that June 7th meeting, tweak their thoughts and comments, their presentation, and I anticipate they will be back, possibly on July 17th, requesting that we host a public meeting, so just be prepared for that. If we're going to do a public meeting, it's recommended that we do that in September, not before, because of, you know, we want to make sure everybody can get it on their calendar, especially the residents in the Pebble Ridge area, so heads up on that.
The only downside is, is that's really going to extend us, this whole project's been a couple years in the making, just for the feasibility.
I don't think we can schedule a meeting in July on this. Public meeting in July?
Yeah, the end of July.
Well, I know the last time we went through this, there was a lot of consternation when the public meeting happened in August because of vacations, and it's been this long, I think we've got to give people out there the opportunity to attend, and I think that they're all being in September.
Another month is not going to make a difference. And then, we're more or less guaranteed that we will get as many people there as possible, without conflict to summer vacation. Okay?
I heard you.
Have I sufficiently persuaded you?
No.
No, okay. All right, next item on the agenda, Act 13, Local Government Control. I did this letter in response to Ms. Rowley's concerns, and the concerns we have regarding the Pennsylvania legislation on control of zoning vis a vis the gas drilling and Marcellus shale issues, so, and our local challenges to Act 13. Mrs. Rowley, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to see the draft of our letter, but I'm happy to provide it to you, and I'm looking for consensus on the board to send this letter out.
I don't have a problem with it, just one minor little grammatical thing.
Okay, we can do that?
Other than that, I'm okay.
All right. Anyone okay?
I'm okay.
Is there, well, I guess we don't need... We got a consensus. The letter's going to go out, Mrs. Rowley, would you like to have a copy for, with it? There is a minor typo in there, so you can have it for your files. Thank you. Thank you for your work in this regard.
Thank you all.
Is there, pardon?
Do you have a question?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Thank you, is the question under 4A, correspondence, the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan, you covered it?
Yes.
That's being sent to the Planning Commission for your analysis and analyzed by the staff for comments to go to Buckingham.
Also, Ken, that's on our website now, you guys may want to know that, under the announcements section, if you go to the announcements section of our website.
Is it?
It's been there a couple days. It's already there, I promise, I did it personally.
Ken, that's Ken Snyder, a member of the Planning Commission, and so you know, Ken, we're not going to pass on, the Board of Supervisors wants to hear from the Planning Commission and the administration before we pass on anything in particular as to their plan. Okay, so that's what we decided to do. Thanks. All right, new business, the 2012 Recycling Performance Grant Review. Sandra, you want to take that?
Sure, we've, for a few years now, been contacted by Huffington Associate Fair, managing consultant who can handle grant applications, and they wanted to see if they could review our 904 Recycling Performance Grant, which is actually typically something I handle, but they, their belief is that they can get us an increased award, which I think is important right now, because this funding has been reduced at the state level by about 40%, so anything that they could increase would be great. They only require payment out of whatever increase they get us, so if they increase our award, they get paid out of that increase, so it seems like it's not, it's a no lose situation for the township to give them a try for our 2011 Performance Grant, and see if they can get us some increased funding, and see where that goes.
It's a limited percentage of the increase that they get, yes?
Yes, it's...
It's 25% of it, yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Any concerns or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, Pyrotec Contracts, Shaffer Pyrotechnics, these are the folks who have conducted our fireworks in years past, I guess, contract is similar to years past. Karen, is it, yeah, maybe you want to talk to it quickly?
It's exactly the same contract, dates have been changed. You will note that there are some memo changes by me on there, which also happened annually with an agreement with the firework company, giving us a little bit more leeway. Basically, we do not pay a portion in advance, we pay it all at the conclusion of the event, and also, we have a little bit later call-in time in the event of rain. The money, the funds have been raised for the concert series, it's all in-house, we're ready to go. One minor correction on the fireworks show, we do have a $5 per car fee, which helps us offset the costs, it is a large event, but other than that, everything remains the same.
Thanks, Karen.
It's the same group we had last year.
It is the same group. It was held, they've also held their rate at a reduced level.
And thanks for securing the funding, no tax dollars at work here, Tom. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's four, no, I'm not recounting, but you're getting it, right? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report from June 19th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill's List for June 19th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, July 17th, here at 7:00 PM. We're going to be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, for July 4th Independence Day Celebration. Sounds of Concert Series 2012 begins next Wednesday, 7:00 PM, at Chapman Park, and please take a list on your way out, so you have your schedule, but for the folks out there, Philly Horn and Band and Fireworks at Central Park on the 1st of July, 7:30, $5 per car. Rain date for the fireworks, the Philly Horn Band, is July 8th. Doylestown Heat, not quite sure who they are, but they're going to perform, be performing at Chapman Park on the 11th of July at 7:00 PM.
Sponsored by the Lions Club.
What is it? What is the Heat?
It's a group of individuals headed up by Chris, Duck Delly, thank you, and other members, and it's supported and works in conjunction with the Lions Club.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. And then, the next Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling will be held on Saturday, July 21st. Township residents, bring your yard waste to Central Park entrance, located off New Britton Road, from 9:00 to noon, and check the website for updates on the fall and summer states for the Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling Program. Any other business? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. We have, please, board members do not leave, we have checks.